That's probably. Dear gracious Father, thank you for another day. Thank you for all your meaning blessings, Lord. Lord, I pray that you be the ones that's affected by the virus that's going around, Lord, that you'll be with the family members and those that they'll be healed to your will, Lord. And I pray, Lord, that you be with this country as we have to make decisions in local and state and federal governments, decisions to make of how the best handle the situation that we're in, Lord. And I pray that they'd look to you for guidance through the whole thing, Lord. And I pray that people would understand that it is not an everyday thing to try to deal with, and it's complicated, Lord. And I know through you that we can get the right answers. And I just pray that people would look to you for the answers during this time. I pray that you'll be with the done, stuttered, and be with the different ones and the that's had that's lost loved ones in the past month or so, Lord. And I pray that you'll be with us as we go through this meeting, Lord, that the decisions we'll make be in your will. And I pray that you'll be with this town, Lord, through all of this, that we will remain strong as a community. And I pray that you'll forgive us as we be before you. And I pray that you'll be with us as we go through the rest of this week, in your precious name we pray. Amen. Don't bring a flag. This gift do it to me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 21st, 2020 Winfield City Council meeting. I don't know how we're going to do going forward with this pandemic that's going around in different orders and different things, but I'm glad it was able to have it in here and kind of space everybody out and be within a social distance. It's kind of hard to handle the ever too weak business by Zoom on telephones and different things. It's just kind of hard to discuss it. It's a lot more easy to discuss it in a meeting with all of us together. There was a couple of things that was on the agenda tonight. When we have a Zoom meeting, it's kind of been advised that we just take and do vote on things that has to be done, like paying the bills and different things and approving this or that. But with far as handling the day-to-day business throughout the city, it's hard to do on the Zoom. They want to just kind of limit what we put on the agenda. But I felt like that we would try to have, being as the meetings are spaced out and different things and things are changing and the new orders are made, that we try to have at least have this council meeting, the last one in July, try to have it in an open session. I appreciate all y'all being here and appreciate everybody wearing masks and trying to... Me for one, I don't like wearing masks, but in respect to others, I feel like that it's my duty to do so in a public place. We have people that says it's violating their rights, that they shouldn't have to wear a mask in public place and different things. But I think it's a good habit for us to practice for respect to others as to wear a mask in a public place. I've been out of state two times since this deal has started, this pandemic started. Everybody kind of handles it different, but I think it needs to be took serious because it does affect others different. Anyway, that being said, we'll go ahead and get started with the first item on the agenda is approve the minutes from July 7th, 2020 council meeting. If nobody has a question, come in, have those minutes written. I need to ask for a motion to approve those minutes. All in favor? I'm going to... I need to move a couple of places around right here. We've got Chris and Dana's different ones got a meeting to be to at 6:00. I'm going to go ahead and for Kim, move number four up to number two. Chris Cook, speak on behalf of the school. Chris, if you want to come right here, just where maybe everybody can hear you.
Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to the council about what we're planning to do for our schools. We are, hopefully, everybody's seen this plan. It's online on our website. I'm trying to pass it out through social media accounts. But if you haven't, you can go on our website and look. There's several different links in the plan that you can click on and go to different sites for the CDC, how about the Department of Public Health. But I wanted to come here and explain to y'all and let you know exactly what we're trying to do when we start school in about three weeks. Our start date is August 13th. We're going to try to have students in the building, half of the students on August 13th, half on August 14th, and then we're going to have everybody on Monday, August 17th. This is, like the mayor said, this is different times. I mean, these are situations that we've never gone through before. So I'm writing this plan as we move along with it. If things change, this plan may change two or three times more than before we start school. And, you know, you can see that the things that are in this plan have been well thought out. I tried to cover every possible scenario, but there's no way that I can cover everything that's going to happen. So I'll try to put in as much there as possible. But one thing I want everybody to know is, we're going to try to be as transparent as we possibly can. We're going to try to be fair, and we're going to put the safety of our kids first and foremost in every decision that we make. So if we can start school safely on August 13th, then we will do that. If we have to back it up a week, then we can do that. If we have to start virtual, then we may have to do that. But whatever we're going to do, we're going to put the safety of our students and faculty first. And I want you to understand that. And I appreciate everybody who's here tonight. I appreciate everybody coming out. I've got a board meeting at 6:00, so I'm not going to be able to stick around. But do y'all have any questions for me that you'd like me to answer while I'm here? Yes, sir.
I think you would be good to tell us about the communication that the school was having with the hospital about what the numbers are. Y'all doing that in coordination with them?
We are communicating with our local health department and the hospital here and looking at our positivity numbers. I'm talking to somebody from the health organization every day almost to look at our positivity rate in our community, not just in the county, because it's different. You know, it varies from place to place in the county. You know, Barred Creek can have a 26 positivity rate and Winfield can have an eight, but our county's going to equal up to be about an 18 percent. So what we do, the school system, is not going to be dictated by things going on in the other part of the county. And I appreciate Dr. Mackey and us the three that run our school system the way that we see fit. We're not Mobile and we're not Anniston, so we can't run our school system the same way they do. You know, they're starting out virtual. I'm trying not to start out virtual, but I can do that if we can keep our numbers going up where our kids and our staff are not in danger. So that's why I'm talking to the health department, talking to our local hospital every day. Mike and I are in contact at least two or three times a week.
What about, what if you, what if a student tests positive? What kind of action are you going to take?
We have a, it's in our plan, they will be quarantined for 14 days if they test positive. Anybody who has been in close contact with them, closer than six feet from one to 15 minutes, will also be isolated. Those students can go home and do virtual learning immediately. They won't miss any class time if they feel like it. And if they don't feel like it, they're held as accused of absence, just like everybody else. But if they go home and they're showing no symptoms, they just tested positive, and they can log on to their teacher's class, and they can go through school just like everybody else. But they will be quarantined for 14 days or unless they're three days without symptoms.
And you're going to be testing the temperature and stuff when they come in?
We have infrared thermometers. We have handheld thermometers that are touchless. We're going to be testing temperatures when they come in the building. So they can walk in front of the screen. I can tell what temperature everybody has as they're walking in our doors. So if we see somebody with an elevated temperature, we'll pull them to the side. We'll check them closely. And if they have temperature, we'll call their families. A lot of these situations, you know, people are testing positive without temperatures. So it's just that we have to be cautious. We have to treat our kids and teach our kids that things are different. You know, we have to teach hand washing. We have to teach sanitation. We have new machines. We have all kinds of equipment that we've purchased. So I think we're ready in safety wise. We've just got to have help from parents, monitoring those kids before they come to school, and making sure they're showing no symptoms, making sure they're showing no new signs of anything, and making sure they're healthy before they send them to school. Because the last thing we're going to have is have a sick child be sent to school with their parents knowing they're sick and then infect a lot of people around them. So that would be a big disaster for a lot of people.
Ray, you want the school to actually be doing the test by sending them offsite?
Yes, we would be conducting the test on site. We're not going to do that. My nerves just have too much to do to conduct COVID testing. So we'll be sending them.
You just recommend them to go if you can recommend that?
We can recommend that. But now if they show symptoms, we can't keep them out for 14 days without them having to be tested. So that's in our right. Like I said, they won't miss a bunch of days if they feel like doing it, because we're going to be doing virtual and face-to-face learning at the same time. Any more questions? I appreciate the opportunity. Come and talk to y'all. If I can ever do anything, just let me know. Glad to come and speak to y'all as often, as loving as you'd like.
I appreciate it, Chris.
Thank you.
The next item, we'll go ahead and move Dana Harden up on the agenda of Quail Run subdivision. The last time we tabled her request of a speed, that speed breaker that's put in in Quail Run, we tabled it with her to get a petition. She will start that, just start that petition right there. She's, that's what you've got there in the petition. With residents in, within that subdivision that's opposed to that speed breaker being there, that at the council's request, she's went and got this, got this petition signed. It kind of looks like you've got a pretty big variety there of different. Those are not all the same family and the different, there are different residents, different households on that signature list. Everybody before? I don't think there's any names and I think you couldn't get a hold of them or something. That's minutes. Last minute minutes. Mayor, go to him. Put your place. Has anybody, the council have any questions or any discussion for Dana about this request that she's got for the speed breaker that's, I think about half of it's gone. I think half of, well, I know half. I've been over there. A lot of the speed breakers not even there. We know we just did that subdivision, paved in that subdivision not too long ago. Been about a year, year and a half. Anybody? You can't hear me? Did you hear what I said? I said, has anybody got any comments or, comments or questions for Dana about her request, the council, at the council's request, she's got a petition, so to speak, of the people that oppose of the speed breaker being in that, in that entrance and exit. It went across both sides of the road. They're going in and out of the Quail Run subdivision. It looks like 90% of the people oppose it being there. With the, with the council having her to have a petition signed, I mean, it would be my recommendation that the council vote to do away with that speed breaker in that, where it's at in that subdivision. All in favor? Put that, put that in with your minutes. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is Safe Place Donation. Am I the only one that's got a copy of this? They all have. Y'all got, all of y'all's got a copy of this in the, you know what was done in the past, ain't you?
So we have had that donation every year.
Is everybody, is all the council familiar with the Safe Place Donation? What the Safe Place is? You familiar with bread? I know bread is. This, this is, they're asking the city to be part of the, a small part of the funding of this operation that's, it's for violent homes, different things that happen, domestic violence homes, different things. It's for a good cause. They're asking us to donate $250 for that reason. All in favor? The next item on the agenda is cemetery mapping bids. Is everybody, we got representatives from the cemetery board here tonight? How many, how many bids did she receive? You received three bids on the actual mapping of it to correct what issues that we've had with not knowing certain?
Well, it was, the first bid we got was from Haverhill. And we put that to the next person, which was kind of Dean and his company. And then we sent those two bids to the last company. And he actually had to beat me with those. So I don't know if we should give technically the other two to him.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they, the way they did that. I think they shared the information, shared the information.
Each subsequent bidder had previous bidder's information. So that's not, you know...
Not normally how it works.
It's not, it's not real fair to the guy that turned it into the jersey first. So,
let me see that for just a second. Well, you had the first one. She probably may not have the first one in there. Have you looked over this, Todd?
I mean, I was worried we had three bids and, but I have not looked over yet the bids.
I kind of, what I kind of feel like we need to do is, uh...
I just made a note that, you know, there was some reservation about the newest section that already been sold. But, and that response is, if we had one big map done by one company, we would be so much better than trying to piece this map, that map, this, that direction. Even though you had it surveyed, but still not a cohesive look to track down.
It needs to be simplified.
Yes. And it would help with some of the processes for a little bit.
Have we, has the coun, has the council acted on this at all? Far as okaying, did the council okay us to let them ask for bids?
Yes.
The cemetery board, the cemetery board was going, y'all, y'all said y'all could fund at least half of what this project's going to cost. Has the council voted to pay the other half?
Yeah, they wanted the bids first. We asked one big, they didn't want to really ask them a couple more bids. And I thought, we asked for a normal one basically. She was back there.
But I think what we need to do, though, is we kind of, we can kind of see what it's going to cost. I think we need to act as a council to whether or not we're, and if we're going to go forward, if we are going to go forward, let them submit this, let them have this drawn up and submit it out for a bid to where it will be fair to all three bidders. You see what I'm saying? I mean, I feel like that's, I think that's the, it'll be the best thing to do because the second bidder's seen the first bidder and the third bidder's seen the first and the second. Correct? I think that's what, I think that we need to, I think we need to take actions that we, that we will let the cemetery board pay 50% and the council pay the other 50% to get that map and get that situated and put it out for bid. If we have to, we can get, we can get an engineer to draw up, draw up a bid, a bid sheet of how, what we're asking for, where everybody be bidding apples to apples. I kind of think that's how we need to do it. I mean, I would like, I would like to see the council vote with cemetery board paying out of the cemetery fund for 50% of the city, pay the other 50%. You know, it's going to be probably in the neighborhood of $8,000 to $10,000.
And also, one of those is going to, I think it's the lot, and I think the name said that bill provides with a law of every cemetery plot and person can after the orders and that, that they were guarded there and that's what, which would be a tremendous area to do in that time.
When we put it out for bid, we need to make sure that that bid package there, so to speak, that it covers everything that you're expecting. You know what I'm saying? It's going.
Well, that's what it will say.
Yeah, we can use that to do our specs and spec out exactly what they want. We'd send that out and say, this is what we want you to do, briefly. Right. Right. So that's why we need to spec it out. Say, this is what we want.
Yeah, exactly.
What I'd like for the council to do is to vote to pay for, pay the 50% of it. And then I'd like to take and put it back to the cemetery board. Y'all have a bid sent out, bid sheet, bid package sent out or whatever, advertise it in the paper or...
Buy a bid online or something.
Right. And then y'all come back with y'all's recommendation to the council as which company that you want. Since that, since that's on, since it's on the agenda, I'm just asking for a motion of the council. Thank you, Bill. Hard to talk with it. That, that being said, I recommend that the council will make a motion in a second to approve the going forward with them to pay 50% of the bid of having that work done in the council, the city paid for the other 50%. Motion. All in favor? Just do that and then come back with a recommendation. Probably, she probably won't have to come back before the council. She probably won't have to come back before the council. You won't have to come back before the council. Y'all just let us know who it is you choose to go with.
So we just send out the signature, maybe with that established.
And then we'll open the bids still in this meeting, but then no longer the bid.
Yeah, when you, when you have the bid, get that spec sheet, what you want, get that for the day, what they're looking for before we send back.
Thank you, y'all.
Okay. The next, the next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 1263, 264 Honey Suffle Drive. Todd, you got, you got anything to bring us up to speed on this? What we had on this resolution? We're on standby on the resolution, don't we?
Yes, that's the one, that is, that is the problem. The abatement board, the abatement board made it the other day. That is the property now, the order stays, that we were doing the resolution of the demolition within a certain period of time. That property has in fact been so, due to another, some, some, somebody else's purchase. If they were wanting to remodel their support on the house, and they've asked for additional time. The abatement board was good for giving them more time. But my suggestion was, since that issue came up by this council before the abatement board actually had their first meeting, that decision needed to be made by the council, not the abatement board on that property. And in the future, the abatement board can do that. And then, in the future, the abatement board can do that, but that one is just something, it can come back before us. And, uh, my understanding is they've already made substantial progress, and, uh, I've got a couple of abatement board members here. But my understanding was that we really wanted some kind of, uh, the new owners to come to the council and give us some kind of timeline about what their plans were, how quick they could get it done, rather than just simply say, we're going to do this. Give us some kind of plan, so if, if the neighbors down there are complaining about, well, I thought this was gonna happen, or here's what's gonna happen, we've got, we've got time. So we really wanted the new owners to come before the council, kind of give us...
So we need to, we need to request those, those new owners to come before the council, state what their plans are for that piece of property?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we wanted, because we felt like we didn't want neighbors to come down.
Yeah, give us some kind of, give us some kind of plan, other than just, you know, we hope that pays, you know, hope not like...
I've been, I haven't been by that particular spot, I've been in that subdivision, but now, my understanding, they're al- they already have started...
Already done, already done substantial, according to Britton, who lives there, they already done substantial work, yeah.
Okay, Todd, uh, I'll schedule, make sure that, go ahead and put that down for the next agenda. That the new owners, the house at, uh, two sixty-four Honey Suffle Drive, be at the next council meeting. Uh...
And Britton, who lives in that, would have said that most of the people that he talked to would, would prefer the house to be fixed, and, and someone living in it, rather than just actually demolishing it and abating it. They, they're happy about that, I think, so he felt like most people would go along with that, but they wouldn't want some kind of definite plan to give us some idea of what you wanted to do.
Okay, uh, that's where we're at on that, so we're gonna, I guess we'll, what we'll, we'll just say that we're gonna table the resolution twelve sixty-three to the next council meeting, too. Uh, the next item on agenda is resolution number twelve sixty-four on five fifty-one Meadowwood Avenue. Uh, is everybody familiar with which house this is in Meadowwood? Uh, the owners, uh, I guess I need to bring them up to speed, what's happening on the place of that one. The owner's daughter has, has contacted me to ask what, what the city, what the requirements would be for that, to bring that to where, would be satisfactory of this resolution. As, as we have talked and discussed before, that, like Todd said, this, 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 these, these two were actually acted on before the abatement board actually had their meeting. So it kind of, the, the abatement board was not involved in these two particular, uh, residents in these two different subdivisions. But I, Todd, we can, I have spoke a little bit with Todd, but I have, have, I have yet to send the, send to the, send that, fill that request that they've asked for to them. Because I want, I want to know that what I tell them is exactly how the council feels that needs, what needs to be done. Uh, Todd had mentioned a few things to me, but I think it needs to be, since we, that council has acted on it, that we need to give a written request to this party that's asking what needs to be done. We need to give them a written request of what we expect to be done with that property to bring it up to satisfaction for the city's concern. Uh, and we can, Todd has mentioned different things, I think there've been a few old, older vehicles brought in and parked there and, uh, building materials and different things, and the yard not being kept up, uh, and from what conversation that I had with Todd, that tho- that needs to take place, those, those things needs to be cleaned up and, and it needs to be brought to a, a livable condition. And is that, am I right?
Yeah, and, and what I'm discussing with the abatement board, and what I'd like to say in, in council is, you know, but that's always, but that always taught me, it, it always taught the truth, truth's always the best way to deal with it. Uh, truth be known, when, when we took action on this, the council meeting that night, I was confused about which property we were bidding. Because there's two properties in Meadowwood, both owned by the same owner. One of them is, is, is burned, is, is in horrible shape, is burned down. This property, it, it, when I got the paperwork, only the photographs on it, after the council meeting, prepared the resolution, I see the house, and this house just simply needs to be finished, it needs to be cleaned up and finished. It doesn't, it, it's not the mistake that the one in quarter states was, and I, just to be quite honest, I felt that it wasn't the right thing to do, given the condition of that house, to go forward the way that, that, because like I said, I was just confused. I don't know if we were communicating, if we were, as you said, dealing, talking apples to apples or apples to oranges, because I was looking at different locations and thought it was in a lot different shade. So, because of all that, and I discussed that at the abatement board, and I think what we want to do is, is just give them a chance to get that house up to spec, get it, get it cleaned up, uh, get it made happen. We can't make them put somebody in it, but, you know, we can have a definition of habitability so that it's finished to the point that it is livable for someone, if you get someone that, that wants to rent it. Uh, at least make them get to that point within a certain period of time. And then if they don't, then we can go the next step, but I think going that other step, this early, given the condition, that house is a little bit off the top, and, and I'll do, I'll follow my silver to say, I, I, I was confused. I, I really thought it was a different problem, based on what my conversations were. So like I said, I'll just, I'll just leave you the truth there, and say that that was a mistake, and, uh, I was mistaken about the property we're talking about, so.
Mayor, I'd like to add to that, uh, you referenced speaking with the owner's daughter. Uh, I would make the recommendation thirty, sixty, ninety days, completion number one on Meadowwood, and then jump over to Luxalala, the same amount of time, I'm gonna clean up the thing. So, you know, I think I got a word in hand, in hand, to both of us, to be able to play with it and that, that's six years.
Okay, uh, on the Luxalala, I would assume, everybody, everybody's seen that one on Luxalala? I would assume what you means, that needs to be ground level, huh?
Right.
Okay, what, what, what are the, what are the requirements for us to complete, what, what, I need something, I feel like we need something in writing or, or a list, so to speak, a checklist, so to speak, or, I don't want it to be a brawl. Say, it's gotta be completed, I, I'd like for, have it, you know, kind of, what needs to be done.
We need to get a list together.
Well, that's what I, I, I think so.
I mean, I think it's gotta be livable, outside, it's gotta be clean, definitely, I don't want those folks to next time, you know, word it out.
I think a list, that way, I think we could, if we had a list, they could check it off, you know, instead of saying livable, because livable is one thing to some people and it's something else to some...
I'm starting to realize how livable is.
Well, I, I, I know.
If you understand what I'm saying, so they know, so I would tell them that livable is sixty days.
That, is that far enough just...
But God, the attorney wants to make the list, the list, so they, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Mayor, I would, I would say this, you know, we, we've done, we've basically backed up, we've basically undone what we've, it started out today, because we're...
Because of the, because of the misunderstanding.
Misunderstanding, okay, we've acknowledged it. That was done before the abatement board, now we have an abatement board, the abatement board's had a meeting. So as to that property, I think it would be perfectly timed and, and, and things to do to ask the abatement board to give us, to, to look at that property and say, okay, now, you're in place, now, we, we've put the brakes on that one. Now you tell us, y'all, y'all look at it, do your job as the abatement board, and tell us what you want them to do within that timeframe, and then we will send it out under the city's letterhead, following advice of the abatement board. I think that's, that, I think that's the way to handle it.
I agree with that, I'm around that. That's what the council wants, but I agree with that. I'll put it to the abatement board, let them come up, and then... Then they bring that recommendation back.
Yeah, I think that's what we are doing, and, and a recommendation of what to do and what to happen.
If the council okayed doing that...
Yes, yes, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to have included, because since the same line over especially. Is the council okay with doing that, letting the abatement board take care of it and bring back the recommendation to us? That's what we need to do. Second, all in favor? Okay. All right, the next item on agenda is to rebuild Alabama grant application. Oh, I skipped one, okay, yeah, let me go back. Look, I, I jumped ahead of one, resolution number twelve sixty-five handbook amendment, uh...
Mayor, you read that whole, that whole thing, but about halfway through it, you'll see where the existing one says compensatory time off, and the amendment says, uh, big day, one and a half times regular rate.
Yeah, I think I can read these two, uh, fancy writing paragraphs and get it pretty much understood.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're doing, the top, the first one is what it is named on, and it says compensatory time off. The one below it is what we're changing it to, it changes it from compensatory time off to time and a half, the regular rate, if they're having to work on the holiday.
Everybody familiar with this resolution that we've been talking about, is everybody familiar with what we're doing for, we've had this discussion, I think, two or three times? Has everybody got a copy of this? In there?
I think I got it, I think I was gonna...
Uh... Let me, let me just read it real quick, like, the current policy in the personnel handbook reads as follows. When a holiday observed by the city falls on Saturday or Sunday, such holidays shall be observed on Friday before or Monday after the holiday, as directed by the mayor. An employee who is required to work on official holiday shall be given, uh, compensate, compens...
Compensatory.
Compensatory time off for the next ninety days, or paid for the day of the regular rate of pay. At the discretion of the department head and approval of the city. It is expected that per, city personnel will be present at work or approved leave with pay on the workday schedule immediately preceding and following a holiday. If an absence is unauthorized for either of those days, the holiday will not be paid. Uh, that's how it is now. And then what we're proposing, how to change it is, when a holiday observed by the city falls on Saturday or Sunday, such holidays shall be observed on Friday before or Monday after the holiday, as directed by the mayor, which that's always, but, uh, it's always a council, mayor decision, usually on the, I don't think we've ever had that decision happen to make. An employee who is required to work on official holiday shall be paid for the day at one and a half times the regular rate of pay, at the discretion of the department head and approval of the city. It is expected that the city personnel will be present at work or on approved leave with pay on the workday schedule immediately preceding and following a holiday. If an absence is unauthorized for either of these days, the holiday will not be paid. Basically what, what it's doing is paying, that, that employee is getting paid time and a half for having to work that holiday day. Is everybody, that's, everybody understand that thought? I, I, it's a recommendation to me that we go forward with this, I think we've already kind of approved that, that we go ahead and prove this resolution number, uh, twelve sixty-five to the handbook. Second.
Second.
All in favor? Now, let's go down to the next item on agenda is rebuild Alabama grant application. Uh, is everybody familiar with the governor's rebuild Alabama, the rebuild Alabama Act? Part of the, part of the fuel tax, let's talk, let's talk about the fuel tax for just a minute. Does everybody in here know what, what, how much money the city of Winfield is going to receive for its fuel tax? Does any, any of the council know about what that figure's gonna be? Cause you hear, you hear a different thing, I'm, don't worry, I'm not gonna get on a rant and a rave, but you hear different things, and people are talking about what happened, what's going on with our fuel tax money. That money is to be, used to be the two roads with it. And I'm gonna tell you, our part's around thirty-three to thirty-six thousand dollars a year. Thirty-three to thirty-six thousand dollars a year. These driveways, it costs thirty-six thousand dollars. So it's going, we, we're gonna use, that money's gonna be used, the fuel tax money's gonna be used for paving, because that's what it was designed to do, but, but that's what our, the city of Winfield's part is, is, is gonna be around thirty-six, roughly thirty-six thousand dollars a year. But that money with the other, uh, trust fund and, uh, the other, which we got a, uh, we've got a, uh, fuel sales and gas sales tax that's in there, that, that one cent has to go toward paving. Toward those, toward, but we still shy of a hundred thousand dollars every year, we still shy of a hundred thousand a year to do paving with. Uh, to, and, and, and when we do, like a CDBG grant, that includes paving to build a road in, say, to the industrial park or whatever, when we put that, when we do those grants, we got a twenty percent matcher. That twenty percent matcher on any CDBG grant is gonna be in the neighborhood of seventy thousand dollars to seventy-five thousand dollars each time. That's what it is, the, the matcher. You pay seventy, seventy-five thousand to get close to half a million, four hundred thousand, to do, to build that road, to do that road. That in itself eats up our so to speak, fuel tax money or our trust fund money for building roads or whatever. That, those projects, Mike, when he does a budget, he don't ever budget a CDBG grant unless it's already in the process prior to the budget. And I don't know that you budgeted then our matcher part of that, he does budget it, some, but some, but during the year, during the year, we're gonna apply for CDBG grant money that's not been budgeted that year. But do we want to not receive a half a million dollar grant, because we don't wanna pay seventy thousand dollars to get that half a million dollar grant? We, we're applied, we, we're Regal Street, everybody's familiar with Regal, we've had problems with Regal since it was put in forty years ago, fifty, whenever it was, because it's one way in, one way out, the cupboard's not big enough. The water has, all these rains, it's been coming over. We have applied for a CDBG grant for that, for that project. That's gonna, that would eat up our paving money, so to speak. But we have still, even though we're doing these grants, and we've had a CDBG grant in the process just about every other, every year to every other year, we've had a, a CDBG grant going in, 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 in the last five years, I think we've had three, that's in the, that's been in the works. Uh, which probably, uh, the way time flies, it may be the last six years, but we had a CDBG grant Tahoe Road, we had a CDBG grant at Tiffin out here, we have, we got a CDBG grant going right now at Industrial Park up here. We had a CDBG grant going at the Huddle House. Uh, we had a CDBG grant going on the Hampton Inn side, that was the year that, that, in two thousand twelve. So, so that bit, you know, but we're still, we still are doing paving, and we're still staying ahead. I mean, we're, we're making, hey, we're, we're making ways to make, to do asphalt, it's just, but that, I wanted to explain where our fuel tax money goes. A lot of times it gets unbooked, that like it's not being used for what it's used for, but that's not true. But now the rebuild Alabama is another grant. That's, that money is the amount of money that out of that, that, out of that money that was put to the, put to the side by the governor, it's a ten million dollar pot, I think somewhere around that. It's at their discretion of who gets that money for different road. Ninety percent of, about all the time, a grant money will not pay, pay for paving of city streets. That's usually solely on us to use our fuel tax money or trust money, for some, different trust fund money for paving, that's, that's put aside for paving, that's left on us to use those monies for that. This rebuild Alabama grant is allowing people to request, apply for that grant and, and use that money in doing city streets. So I kind of, Mike has been in, in on this just a little bit, I think, on this grant application. Uh, normally... Normally, I don't, there's not a matcher on this grant, I don't think there's a, there's not a matcher on this grant order.
But you're not in the required, back, twenty-five, but I think it may be that puts it back and there's better chance of getting the grant funded or getting more funded.
Right, if the city's, if the city's, if the city's willing to put, put money with it, they're, they'll come near letting you to do it because you're willing to help to do it. So naturally, for, if there's money available like that, we won't apply for it, in my opinion. The reason, we need to know how the city stands on for is what our matcher would be. Uh, let's say if we got a project that we want to do that's going to cost four hundred thousand dollars, or three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars. Is the city willing to put what a percentage is the city willing, because when I apply for this grant, I need, I'm going, I'm going to have an engineer submit what it's going to cost us to do this project. And I, I need with the council to do this application, I need the council to be in agreement that with me, not me just making the decision of what we're going to do, is, is, okay, we're in agreements, in agreement to do this, this area of city streets, to do this. We want you to have, we want you to tell me, we want you to have an engineer draw it up and let's submit it, and this is what we're willing to pay to submit this application. Now, the deadline for this application is approaching pretty soon. The deadline, you remember the deadline?
I believe it's this fall.
Yeah.
We've got full time, I believe.
Yeah. We need to, it's, we need to, we need to kind of get an idea of how much we want, what we want to try to apply for, and how much we want to say that we'll give toward that project. I need the council to be thinking about that so I can, and I'm, we'll have an engineer look at it, and the engineer do us a drawing, and we'll submit it in with application, we're going to pay, this is what the engineer says it's going to cost, this is what we'll say that we'll put with it to make it, to, 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 if you'll, if you'll give us the funding, we'll add this much, we'll pay this part of it. And I need, I need the council to try to, I know there's a lot going on in the next month, uh, but we need to, you know, that's, that's why it's kind of, we've got, we're working on CDBG up here in progress for Regal Street. There's still a lot of legwork that's got to be done before that application can be fully submitted to the state. We feel like that we're, we've got a very good chance of getting that CDBG money granted to us because of the situation and the videos and things that I've took and the pictures that I've took and the work that we've done to try to keep that where people can go in and out when this weather does what it does. We think we've got a good chance on that. I'm working on FEMA project, where FEMA has got some money because of floods that happened between February and March. That, the road down here on Midway Drive where the, where that pipe is sinking in the center, I'm, I'm working, I have, I have applied for that, I have put that, what are you doing?
You're totally not working.
Oh. They, okay. I'm, I'm working with an engineer to draw us up a thing to submit to FEMA to, for, for damages that we had from March, February, March, it had to be during that timeframe. Midway Drive is on it. Berry is on it. Cherokee, the other end of Cherokee is on it, and there's other, we've done had, we've done had one, uh, Zoom meeting, we've had one Zoom meeting. They're going to come out and inspect what we've got. But that, I'm feeling like that is going, that, that, that request that we're going to apply for, for that during that, that, with the, the amount that, that we, I feel it's going to be in the neighborhood of five hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They won't, they won't be a matcher on that. That's where FEMA's helping us get recovered from what damages we have. I don't know if everybody understands what damages that we've had, but we had, we had a cupboard washout on Posey Lane that Rob had to go and fix during all that, we had one on Columbus Loop that he had to repair, we had the one on Berry that he had to repair, and, and, and numerous smaller other, smaller other projects, but one of the header walls fell off Midway Drive.
You got trouble with that?
Huh?
You got trouble with that?
On which one?
I don't know.
Yeah, around that, uh, that, I still in question, I'm going to still, I'm doing a little work on it, because I kind of think that might be for the state where that's at, I don't, you know, I don't know that that's going to be all on us because the right of way, I ain't sure, I'm not sure about the right of way that's out there. But that being said, we've got all these, all these projects in, and, and now that I've mentioned Berry and Cherokee, Dixie Paving's, Fisando Paving's all over here on the, uh, west side of town at the new Hotuco Restaurant. So I had him look at those, look at those two places on Cherokee and on Berry. I asked him about bringing a grader and smoothing that out, and we'll put that rock in on Cherokee, at the other end of Cherokee, to give me an idea of what that would cost to fix, to, to put some asphalt on that rough spot, and then go back and put asphalt on top of that over there on Berry. Which I still believe both of them road, that one road ought to be called the same road, but I know it turns, goes through there, but there's two different roads, one's Berry and one's Cherokee. And I, and I, I did confirm with the engineer, if we spend any money, if we have to put asphalt, even though it's after February or after March, the money that we spend repairing that will go back to that, it will go toward that, that request that I've asked for will pay us back in that money. I think it's, I think it's right at a thousand dollars to fix, to put asphalt and fix that one over the cupboards on Berry and a little over, take a grader and pave over the other, and I think it's a little over around twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two hundred dollars. Uh, but, but that, that's where we're at on, that's where we're at, we got, I'm working on FEMA, we got USDA on Regal. And I say USDA, FEMA, and we got a CDBG on Regal, and then we got FEMA on those other projects. But this rebuild Alabama, I need the council to get, to decide what street and how much you want to apply for. I don't think we need to apply for a million dollars and say, okay, we're going to give a hundred thousand. I, I don't think that's going, but I, I think it needs to be somewhere in the neighborhood, I think it needs to be in the neighborhood of what we already have to do on a CDBG. Eighty, twenty, they pay eighty and we pay twenty, I think you need to look at that as a guideline kind of to go by when we submit our application on this rebuild money. But I need, that's why this, I need to ask the council to maybe the first council meeting in, or the second council meeting in August or, or, is that, do we have two full council meetings in August before the election? Okay.
Great. Since that's speeding, I think we're going to have to get, and we'll do all that. We need to look at the most private roads, start paving, like Berry, Cherokee, the power stand, the mill in there, and then there's lots of, of the great, of the wall, that's true, off of forty-seven, comes with that. Yeah, and I mean, that's, that's my opinion about paving, because I think we need to look at the most private roads.
I agree with that.
On that, but my other opinion is that Cherokee and Berry, we need to do something, I mean, like you.
Well, I, that, we can put the, I can get that done in two weeks, he's, he's going to be back up in two.
I, I, I think we need to do that, because they, they're, I mean, they're, they're, it's unsafe to me.
It's bad.
We need to do something, they don't know that that, that Berry.
But I, I want, I want us, I want us to know that those two, those two, whatever we do is going to be temporary, because we're going to need to upsize the cupboard on, on Berry, and we're probably, we're going to have to see if we got a water problem still. If we do, we're going to have to ditch that across the road to get that water to run to one side of that. We, if we get that FEMA grant, if we get the FEMA money, we'll get it back. But I think, I think though, we'll get what we spend on, we'll get our money's worth out of, I guess what I should say.
Make more money trying to patch it up.
Yeah, you spend, anytime you send hauling rock and asphalt down there and drive, and operators are yours.
I mean, I think the layer of paint goes, lasts longer than that, it's like, it's like.
I don't like plant mix, it's too, it don't last long enough. Uh, what about, I mean, though, I mean, since we're on the subject of paving, it's very seldom, I say very seldom, but I think, I'm going to use the word, I'm going to work, use the word fortunate. This city is fortunate to have somebody, have, have business owners, so to speak, that are willing to invest what, uh, our new foe Laurel has invested in that facility that he's put in our seat up here with this new Mex, this new Mexican restaurant. That Mexican restaurant will go up against any Mexican res, any restaurant that's built in any city. He's not asked the city for nothing, he's not asked for any, anything from the city. They had to run a special, they had to run a special water line to him, to that facility for his sprinkler system. And he had to pay to have that line running, and it wasn't, it wasn't cheap. But there's two bad spots on, on our road, the city street that goes in there. I would like to see the city, because when he has his grand opening, people are going to come from different places. I'd like to see the city pay to fix those two spots, not paving from one to the other, but fix the two spots. There's one on the, one on the, uh, north end of his entrance, and there's one on the south, uh, south end of his entrance. I had, I had, Dixie Paving's going to be right there doing the parking lot, though, I'd like for the council, if you're not already familiar with it, look at those rough spot, I mean, there, there are potholes right when you come off of one eighteen that's off the state right of way. It was right before the entrance going in there, and then the other was on the exit coming out of there. I can, I can, I don't want to say for sure, but I, I believe those spots was already in that road prior to that construction starting up. I don't think the construction up there, it may have contributed to make it worse, but those spots was already there.
But what, maybe, what would you call it, paving, so you get tired of it, you know, as well?
Yeah, it'd go, the part, from, from, from the, where the property line is, at the Hotuco, where the property line is, and Pirates Den here, and Hotuco's here, the road's good this way. That road, that road is fine on past Pirates Den. All right, from, from right here, back this way, probably, uh, about from here to that very back seat back there. The width of that road needs to be fixed from here to that back seat, and nearly the same thing from the, off of one eighteen. It'd be, it, it won't be right off one eighteen, it's going to be where the state's, uh, embankment, or whatever you call it, comes in and then starts. It's going to be kind of close to where theirs stopped and then it picks back up. They gave a price, I think it was roughly thirty-six hundred dollars.
Did you get a price point, how you made it from just past Pirates Den there to the Hotuco business?
That would be two, two patches, the road, the road's pretty good in between. In between those two spots, the road, I was out there with, the road's not beat up.
I mean, what, what, what you, you take a boat, just like you call it, just, just right past the Pirates Den?
From the high, from one eighteen to the Pirates Den?
Yeah, just passing.
It's on the city, right, the, the, the city.
That city street, Thordale, isn't it?
Yeah, and right there, it's more, it's, it's all.
Where, where is the payment, the, 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 the?
The, they supposed, he told, I met with him last week, and he said it'd be about two weeks.
So we got time to do that?
I think so, before next council meeting.
I'd like to hear, if you, if you're trying, if that's what's being done.
I, I could, from, from a look, there's two spots about the same distance, and the distance in the middle, the distance in between them's about the same as those two spots, how big they are, so I'm going, I'm going to be, I'm going to figure it'd be ten, eleven thousand dollars to do from one eighteen to the, to the property line. Then the middle, I mean, the road looks good, but they, they, they don't cut it down, they won't cut it down and it'd be smooth, it'd be a hump. I mean, it's going to be a get on, you're going to get on and get off each time, that's, I don't like that, but that's what's going on. Okay, all right. Yeah, I'm, I'm led to know. Mm-hmm.
I, I know, I know you made it stop, I know we had to stop it.
Yep.
I, I think the road is decent, right there.
Yeah, the road, the road's decent, believe it or not, that road's decent.
So you're talking about, you're going all the way back, you're talking about third pathing?
Yeah, I'm talking about running them sections. I mean, we're so tight with money, I mean, but you're going, you're going to do this each time.
A little bit better than that?
Yeah, filling the holes would be better than not. Because I mean, like that one over on, uh, Cherokee, that, that, you better not hit that at any speed, which you can't, there's not much room to hit it there, but I'm talking about, as soon as you turn on it, you're going four wheeling.
Very clear.
He puts that grader on it, we're going to get it down. If y'all, I mean, we, I can get him to give, yeah, if I, I was going to take some spray paint and kind of spray where I had it to, but I think you can see where it's going to, if y'all look at it, go out there and look at it, see what you. I started to, uh, send a group text and get y'all to look at it prior to the meeting, but I should have done, huh?
So like, I.
Yeah. And I, I just think it, look, I think it, we need to at least, it's a city street, and we need to at least, for that grand opening, as, 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 as many customers as he's going to come in and out checking that new business out, we need to at least fix it where it goes in there. I mean, it's rough.
But it's not over there, because I'm, I'm talking about that, that means people are going to be, you know, they're.
Yeah, it's bad.
They will be there, they'll be there, they'll be there. We did, it's bad, we have to have, with the money.
All right, I'm going, that, but I need y'all to work on this rebuild Alabama grant. Kind of give me an idea of what you want me to apply for, and how much we're going to be able to pay toward that. Because I don't want to apply for it not knowing what we stand for and what we'll match it for. All right.
Say the percent of Alabama, the rebuild Alabama, like, eight percent?
I think we need at least do twenty percent of what we asked for, that's my opinion. I think if you ask for a hundred thousand, you need to give twenty. I mean, that's just. They got it. You got the, Hamilton, Hamilton, Hamilton's done got it, I think, I think Hamilton, Breat, and you and I think. They want you, they, they're not going to just give it to us without putting something up. But, but the way I am about it, I mean, is, whether if you have to take it off CD, if you got an opportunity to get it to do road work and, 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 and embed the roads in the city, your money ahead, instead of having to pay for it out of pocket as we go along like we have been doing. If we can get somebody to help pitch in to pay for it with money way ahead, because it's like, it's like concrete, it's not going to get no cheaper. It's going to continue to go up. But kind of, I mean, Mike's working on the budget, but I can go ahead and tell you, he's going to tell you, you don't have no money for it. He's going, he's going, that's going to be, because, I mean, am I wrong, Mike? There's not going to be no money for it, are there?
We, we only put about a hundred fifty in there for paving. That doesn't mean it's off a hundred fifty.
Well.
We have it in it.
Yeah, he, he always says where you're going to get the money, but we manage.
I, I think, like, that rebuild Alabama, I think a normal metal is two hundred fifty thousand.
I think we're about.
Doesn't mean we can't, you know, the more, I think that's more, more standing, I don't think you can, probably.
I kind of feel like we need to ask for the five hundred thousand dollars and do some streets. I, I, I think what, I think, well, I'd like the council, I mean, to consider, like Anthony said, the most traveled, the most used roads. I mean, we got, we got three that I can think of real quick, that's, other than what's inside subdivisions, like in Arrowhead and different ones. But that Cherokee and Berry is a well-used road. But that Cherokee and Berry is a well-used road. Ohio, uh, front, uh, is that, um, no, goes, cuts across by the ho- about down below the motel right here, it goes back across over to Fairview. Is that, what's the name of that road? Goes by the radio station. Fairview Road. I think Fairview is also, uh, a very, we got two covets in there that's, that's about to, they having a problem with those covets, the, the road washing the covets needs to be on Fairview. That road and, and we, and that road, one of those roads, there's two. Goes into Tiffy. Over there on that side. The lower road and then the one that goes, you got, uh, Fern Grove, Fawn Grove, Fawn Grove, and Harvest is in there, Fawn Grove, Fawn Grove, and then, uh, I had my sheet, and I forgot which one it, but have y'all been through there? Coming in, coming in off of Highland. Highland going into, uh, Ridgeway. Yeah, Ridgeway. Go on those two roads. We're gonna need to do something with one or both of those roads. I mean, I, I, we done turned one half, I say one quarter of Ridgeway into gravel. We done, we done got the asphalt out of, so bad it made it gravel. But we're gonna have to do something to Ridgeway and Fawn Grove, one, or both, one of them. But what I'm thinking is, I, I think that what we ought to do, in my opinion, is y'all look at it and see, see what we can get done for five hundred thousand dollars. What road, let me get an estimate, and, and let's try to, let's try to shoot as close to two hundred thousand as we can for five hundred thousand. That, that, that's my, my thinking on it. I mean, I te- I think we can do a lot of paving and, and, and make some people happy and get the roads in better shape. We can do a lot of roads, I think, for half a million dollars, I think for five hundred thousand dollars, I think we can do really well. And like Mike said, we always try to budget around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in our budget. Y'all, I know all, y'all's got this sheet that he's already sent out right here. Our sales tax is still, our sales tax is still strong. Uh, you need to look over that, but I'd like for y'all to kinda consider and look over the roads, which everybody's got that list of roads that we got, but those, those two are the main roads, you know, we done Highland all the way through. That was a very populated road, and that, that road is still good, in good shape, and if we can cut, come through on Fairview and possibly Cherokee, that's the other two main roads, and then Cambridge, out by UPS. Cambridge, we might can consider doing Cambridge in that mix. But look at it and see what you think, and if y'all would, maybe we'll get back, bring it up maybe at the next council meeting. Where we can submit that application. I used, I can do it, you ain't gotta make it up. Alright, the next item, we'll move on right here, next item on the agenda is a police hire. Got Chief Burleson here that's requesting to make a, a hire for the police department.
Is, you got no, uh, Robert Morrison, uh, his resignation's full time, and he is gonna stay on his partner. Uh, that left him with a whole space. And, uh, I had three applicants turning in. I asked for certified law firm, uh, two of them turned in, and nine, and, uh, one didn't. I have this graduating Saturday, which is, uh, Nathan Morris. He is, uh, currently working in the jail of Walker County, correctional office. He has put himself through the academy, through the reserve program. He, uh, actually was working for Faith County from two thousand and eighteen to this year. And there was not gonna be any chance of him getting on the road. So, Walker County offered him a shot to start him on bail, uh, for a prolonged period of time, and then go on the road. And he turned in an application, and, uh, I looked over, he is Robert Morrison. And like I said, he dread to go to Saturday. He's been, uh, accepted a job in there, I think he would be an asset for hiring.
It's a true recommendation, it's a true recommendation that this is, this gentleman.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Y'all, y'all do know that this is the guy he's talking about. Has anybody got any questions or, or comments for Brett about this hire? Always, usually, Brett's done a good job with his department, uh, he's not letting me down yet for his, the choices that he's made with officers. He studied this young man here, it's my recommendation by the request and recommendation of him that we put this man on. Second, all in favor? Glad to have you. Next item on the agenda is bid results on the surplus lawn mower.
This is the, I was taking, this is the three.
I forgot about us even having one up for bid. First, the first one's gonna be from Scott Williams. Scott bid four hundred and twenty-one dollars. Let me give you a description of, uh, I know she's got it highlighted, but I don't have to read the whole paper. Uh, City Winfield accepting sealed bids on, uh, on a twenty-fourteen grasshopper, three twenty-nine, zero turn mower with a fifty-inch deck. Person who wished to bid, have it in by today. Scott Williams, four hundred and twenty-one dollars. The next one's Gary Barker. His bid's, uh, fifteen hundred dollars. Everybody knows Gary, everybody knows Scott, but both those, Gary's fifteen hundred, Scott's four hundred and twenty-one dollars. And the other one's on B Construction. Alright, oh, well, let me take that back, it's in a B Construction envelope. Let's see if that's, his bid's gone. Nine hundred and twenty dollars, Philip Bible, B Construction. Hi. Uh, the council won't accept, uh, the high bid, Gary Barker, motion in second, all in favor? Alright, the next item on the agenda is, uh, old business. Has any, gotta go around table ten, if you got any old business. You lost us, saying we got some street signs down, it needs to be got back up. Anthony, you got anything, old business, Chris? Mike, uh, wh- where we at, uh, are we surplusing, and we both, and we talked Brett about surplusing in patrol vehicles? At the council, are you ready to, are we, we're not ready to do nothing? You still got the radar on, Rello? Y'all wanna move it, move that to Cherokee or, uh, uh, Fairview? Y'all wanna move the, the radar from, to one of those other streets? You wanna put it on Berry or Cherokee? I think one will serve the other, put it on the. Make, make the choice on those two roads, if you leave it, if you will leave it on. Make it, make, try to, I tell you what, we gotta meet in two weeks. Do one week on one road, one week on the other road, and then give us a count if you can, when we come back to.
I heard Cherokee and one?
Fairview and Cherokee.
Cherokee for a minute.
Sir.
They go Berry, they go Cherokee.
Yeah. I think a good place to put it, uh, I'll let you make that decision, but I, I mean, it's, you can put it on the straight, down that hill coming off Cherokee, or down that hill coming off Berry, one of the. Huh? Yeah, if you'll do that, Brett, if you'll get us, uh, you'll get it, we'll see what the traffic count is on both those roads in a one-week period. I think it's all, I don't think I've got any, I'm trying to make sure. I, I don't know if y'all, if it's been done yet, I haven't, I don't know that I've been that way. That, at the, uh, this light up here at the Old Napa Building. We keep having problems with the light getting hit by mobile home tow, by mobile homes that's coming through there. First, his first reaction is we're getting mad at mobile homes. That's the wrong action to take, because we shouldn't get, it's, it's our fault, that light sets down at fourteen feet, fourteen something feet. It's supposed to be at seventeen, nearly eighteen feet, and it's down to, it's at fourteen. Shoals Electric has looked at it, Rob's looked at it with them, I think Brett's been with them. They can't run, they, I, I've talked with Britain, Britain, the power company can't do nothing with it. There's no, there's not enough cable to raise that light, that wire that hangs that light. So, me and Rob made the decision, which they had, had, had a, uh, uh, suggestion from Shoals Electric is to turn them sideways. So, if, they've, have they turned them yet? I mean, I don't think they, they may not have turned them yet. Instead of being down like this, they're gonna turn them like this. So, when people go to asking why they did that, we're gonna go ahead and do this one this way too. That, the light that's going, on your face, pulling out of, uh, spans. It's gonna, they're gonna be turned like this, just as, straight up and down. And the reasoning for that is to try to keep them having so much damage by, um, mobile home. We touched base just a little bit on the COVID deal, uh, which, a lot of times, we, uh, council, me and Todd's been biting forth different things about Spike and the viruses, the, the, who's been, who's been tested, you know, different positive, more positive test or whatever. And it seems like every time we go, we start working on what we might need to do as a city, the governor will come in, about the time we decide what we might need to do, and she goes ahead and, and takes and puts an order in place. You know, it's a statewide order now that everybody wear a face mask. You've got some people that's gonna say that it's offending their rights and they shouldn't do it, which I spoke a little bit on it earlier. There's a couple of businesses you won't go in if you don't have a mask. And I kinda feel like, you know, that's, that's kinda how the business ought to take it, how they ought to kinda be if they don't. When you go in, like, if you go in a restaurant, you need to have your mask when you own and you go in. But once you get seated, kinda like we are here with your family, whoever, you're allowed to take the mask off. But when you get up, go to the bathroom, and get up to leave, you need to be ask where you're at. Walmart's giving people masks when they come in, and I've already, I've heard complaints of people, when they get them, they put them on right then, and they get twenty steps back and they check it off, chunk it or whatever. Uh, I've asked the city employees to be respectful of others, and I think that's the key thing in wearing the mask, is if you're gonna be around somebody, you know, pull your mask up, and then when you get out of, out, out, away from, you know, get in your car, whatever, take your mask off when you're not, but I think it needs to be respectful to others. And I think Brett and, uh, just kinda have a good, it, it, pretty much overall, everybody seems to be responding for well. Uh, and I, you know, it's just like Chris, I don't, Chris didn't touch on it much, but they cannot make, I don't think they can make those students wear a mask. But the parents needs to be thoughtful and mindful of other people that their kids around them, and try to get them to wear a mask. You know, I think it's, I think that we, in public and the officer and our guys, the ladies that works in the city, we need to try to wear a mask when we're around other people. Going in the post office, whatever, we need to have, going to grocery store, we need to have a mask on, different things. It get, what gets me is a lot of times, somebody serving you food, whatever, they got it, they got it right here. But, they don't say nothing about your eyes. I mean, your eyes, I mean, I know I'm talking, and that's when it projects, you know, falava, whatever, but once you cover your nose, your eyes is just as important as your nose or your mouth, either one because it's open. But anyway, I think as a city as a whole, I don't know that there's any other thing that we could really do to make our, any more positive, far as trying to enforce it. I mean, you got any suggestions, Todd, of how we might, I mean, if, if you feel like we're in lines by the way we're handling it, or you think there's something else that we need to do, Brett, or y'all, you see it, you see people in different places, I mean, we got people that's concerned about going out because people not obeying orders, you know? You know, when it's, when it's, when it first started, and when they made non-essential businesses be closed, people were upset because their business had to be closed because it was considered non-essential. And of all the people, they were allowed to open, I mean, these businesses are allowed to open. I don't, I think if it was my business, I feel like if I was allowed, you know, to be, be open back up. But with stipulation now that we've got a face mask ordinance, the next action is, could be, they shut everything down. And it, and it's not gonna be good, and I mean, the first go-around was just a taste of what it possibly could be. We've got an industry now that's shut down for two weeks because it tested one positive, they shut the whole industry down. tested one positive. They shut the whole industry down for two weeks inside wind fever. That's gonna affect everybody. It's gonna start affecting everybody. And if, if, if it keeps, if it got worse, it keeps getting worse, they're gonna be to the point where they don't have no option because people didn't want to obey the mask ordinance or try to keep from spreading. I mean, so it's, 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 it's just a simple, you know, when you're in public, it's like, I've got one to wear around, I don't like it because I don't like it hanging on my ears. But you know, it's just as simple as pulling it up and then taking it back down. I don't understand why that's, I mean, I don't like wearing a mask. I don't like, look like Johnny Carson up here wearing this or whatever. But I mean, it, but it's what they've asked us to do to try to keep the spread of it down. And schools fiscal start about two, three weeks. And I mean, it's gonna, I think we're gonna, if it, if it's, if it's as bad as it possibly could be, I think we're gonna really see our numbers, you know, the good chance our numbers may really increase. So we need to try to, you know, as a council, as a police, as a fire department, as city workers or whatever, try to set an example anyway. I mean, it's hard, you know, not to do it.
May, can I, can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
It's along that line, but like, when, when you, you come by and that was an issue in Walmart this past week, somebody tells an employee in there, I'll do what I want to do, what I want to. It's kind of like telling the, the one at the door that wants to see you and see you, going off on him because they want to see your seat. They're doing a job that somebody else has told them to do. They're making a paycheck to take care of their family. And, and at the end of the day... I, I don't get, I, I don't understand why you would belittle somebody and make them feel bad whether they wear a mask or whether they don't. If they're just doing the job that somebody else has told them to do. If you don't agree, I don't like it. I don't necessarily agree with you. But I'm gonna do it because that's what the governor has planned to do. I, I found it out. I don't necessarily like it and I told a couple of my doorstep. But those workers that are in there are just doing the job. And to me, I mean, it's just, I, I, I don't understand it. And, and if my guy were coming down there, it's not gonna be about a mask issue. It's gonna be about an insurability issue or an issue of trespassing because they've asked you to do something that they require. They have a business, you got them out, you service it. So when you go in there and they're telling you or asking you to do that, you don't do it, just don't go there. I, 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 and it's a totally different story, but somebody coming out, you know, if you don't want them to check your receipt, don't buy there, don't shop there, go somewhere else. But I can't stand that some people just mistreated or, or, or talked down to because they're just trying to do the job just like I'm trying to do. That's all.
All right, if no others got any other old business, I'm gonna ask for the next item on the agenda is pay the bills. I need to ask for motion, pay the bill, second. All in favor? All right, the next council meeting. I need to ask the council, Angie, that council meeting's August the fourth. That council meeting's August the fourth. She won't be able to be here. Two things. Do we want to move it because of the absence of the clerk, move it to the sixth? Second thing is, do we want to have it in an open, open setting here unless things change, if things stay, the ordinances and stuff stay in place as they are now, and we watch our numbers and they're, where they at, and there's nothing catastrophic happen, do we want to continue to have another open meeting here or do we want to go back to Zoom? I need to, I need to know if we want to move that council meeting because her absence. And I need to know if you want to continue to have it here till, uh, till the next meeting.
My recommendation for May, I'd like to bear to the city if they have enough of May.
That's his opinion. Anybody else want to elaborate a little bit? Anthony, you got a choice to perfect?
I'd like to have it with the sixth to third.
Okay.
I'd like to have a open. Right here, same. And, you know, and whatever they go over there, like, other team.
All right, do I need to amend the agenda, change that meeting time, or we're gonna just announce that that's when we're gonna change it? Uh, we change that meeting to August the sixth. Sir? Yeah. Uh, move that meeting and we'll, we'll have that meeting here in this facility again. All right. I need to ask for... Yeah, I mean, I think this, could everybody hear okay out there? I think, Mike, you can sit a little closer to the front. If you got a front row seat, just because you're babbleish don't mean you have to sit back there. Angie, move the microphone while I go, probably cut it off. Can you hear me now? Give me one of them things, we don't have to hold that. Uh, just ask Connie if she could hear it on TV. Uh, okay. If there's nothing else, I'm gonna ask for motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank y'all.
Don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.youtube.com backslash forty-nine county news TV.